So we're not ready. Now we're ready.
I got the A-OK. Here we go.
All right, we'll try this again. I call the meeting to order for the January 14 regular City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right, Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
We'd like to take public comments on agenda and non-agenda items first.
Okay, I'll look for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Adam Leverens, I don't want to do this, and I don't think you'll appreciate it, so I hope you recognize that I'm trying to be courteous by talking about it while there's fewer people in the room. On the closed session agenda is the Director of HR suing the city manager, as I'm sure you're all aware, for harassment, creating hostile work environment, dispersment of public monies in violation of the Labor Code, et cetera, et cetera. If I look through the complaint, the city attorney's name comes up 38 times and the city manager 49 times. And when we have the closed session report during the general meeting, I don't know what you can say, but is this being handled by outside counsel? And is this a negotiation? Or, you know, the city manager is going to be in the closed session at the beginning, as is the person suing her. It's like a soap opera, and it's confusing. And there are people who would appreciate any clarity that could be offered. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Stapleton, members of the City Council. My name is Jim Mosher. I noticed that when you come back at 5:30, we're going to be hearing a presentation about the history of lower castaways, which I am sure will be much appreciated. I just wanted to note that when your colleagues in Laguna Beach come back to their meeting at 5 o'clock, they're going to be hearing a fire update. And for those who were not fortunate enough to read the Friday edition of the city manager's newsletter, I'm sure many residents of Newport Beach would also appreciate hearing an update on that, considering the danger that many of them face potentially in the future. I also wanted to comment on the closed session, and these are just kind of general comments. I wanted to remind the council members that the general rule in California is that the public's business is to be done in public so that the public knows what its decision-makers are hearing and why they're making the decisions they make and what those decisions are. So the closed sessions are a very limited exception to that, which exists not because the public has no right to know what happens at the closed session, because there is some reason at the present moment that you don't want some other party to know what the city's position is on that issue. If, as the mayor says, we truly want Newport Beach to be the greatest city in the world, I would suggest there are some enhancements we could make to the transparency of our closed sessions. One of those is you could voluntarily record what happens in the meeting and make those recordings available when the rationale or justification for holding it at the moment in secret has expired. There is at least one other city in California that does that, and many others in other parts of the United States. Another thing you could do to increase transparency would be to encourage the city attorney to post on the city website so the public could easily see that, the names of all the litigation that the city is currently involved in. We live in Orange County where our court system unfortunately is not all that transparent to the public, so it's not easy to look up even Orange County cases that Newport Beach is involved in. And more importantly, I think one of the cases that you're discussing today might be reaching a settlement of some kind. It would be good to post those settlements when they happen so the public can see what your decisions were without having to ask in the future at a time that they don't know. And then finally, the two pieces of litigation seem to arise, as many pieces of litigation do, from the rejection of some claim that was issued or received by the city. And I would remind you that our original city charter, Section 1114, required all claims received to the city to be presented to the city council. So for many years, they appeared on the agenda so the public could see what the claims were. And one might wonder why we're not doing that anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. And I'm happy to report we will have an update from our fire chief, so I hear you and I agree. Any other public comments? Agenda, non-agenda? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Stapleton. The City Council adjourned to closed session to meet with the city's labor negotiators regarding negotiations with all unions, to meet with the city's real property negotiators regarding negotiations with Palmer Lucky for use of the Porsche of the public right-of-way adjacent to 929 Zurich Circle and 944 via Lido Nord, and to meet with legal counsel regarding litigation title John Doe versus Newport Beach and Barbara Salvini versus City of Newport Beach. And that's all that set forth on the agenda under item 3A through C. The city manager adjourned, the city attorney will not be participating in the Salvini versus Newport Beach matter this evening. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll stand recessed until 5:30 for regular meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order, January 14th, regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right, Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
Yes, we didn't finish things up today, so we're going to come back after the meeting before adjournment and consider items three A through C, and that'll happen at the end of the meeting before adjournment.
All right, terrific. All right, now is the time for the invocation by Pastor Phil Eskins, Lighthouse of Costa Mesa Church of the Nazarene.
Mayor Stapleton, esteemed city council, I always consider it a real privilege and an honor to be able to come and pray before the city councils, I do at Costa Mesa as well, and we have some kind of a relationship with the bridge shelter there in Costa Mesa, and my church was the temporary bridge shelter for two years while they were building the one on Airway. But there's a scripture in the Old Testament that has everything to do with continued success for any city, as it meets the challenges of the new year, and boy, do we have some challenges, huh? And this verse speaks clearly of the need for city, government, and the faith-based community to work together as partners to help solve some of our communities' greatest challenges. The scripture is in Micah 6:8, and I'm reading from a more contemporary translation, says, "But he's already made it plain how to live, what to do. What God is looking for in men and women is quite simple: do what is fair and just to your neighbor; be compassionate and loyal in your love, and don't take yourself too seriously, but take God seriously." Can we pray? Dear only Father, we thank you so much for this time before the city council and the constituents of this great city of Newport Beach. Father, we just pray that you would give the city council and the leaders of this city the wisdom, the godly wisdom, to make the right decisions that would benefit all of its citizens. And Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity, and we ask you to bless them and guide them. The Bible says, "The steps of a righteous person are guided by the Lord." So we pray for this invocation, that you would do that in their lives, and we pray these things in Jesus' name, and everybody said, amen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor Harp. All right, I think we've got the Wee Blow's here, Pack 108, you guys here? Come on down, I love this. I think we've got to make this their tradition every meeting.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, terrific. Yeah, do you guys mind if we come take a photo with you? Let's do this, guys. All right, we'll get the rest of you later. Start, we coming in? Let's hear it, take two steps forward real quick, there we go, there we go, let's, all right. All right. Okay, so now is the time for our very own Bill Abdel to come up here and give us a little history of the city of Newport Beach. This is something I'm very passionate about and excited about, this is going to be the theme throughout 2025, so the idea is to celebrate Newport, and in order to celebrate Newport, I think you have to better understand your past. So, Wee Blow's, take some notes, this is important history for the city of Newport Beach, but my goal is during every city council meeting, individuals like Bill Abdel, Bill's a local historian who founded Newport Beach in the Rearview Mirror, which produces popular videos and a podcast about the events and the people famous and forgotten that have shaped Newport Beach. His videos have generated more than 2.3 million views on Instagram, and his podcast has nearly 43,000 downloads. Bill's love for Newport Beach history began during his decade-long stint as the editor of the Daily Pilot, he also worked as an investigative reporter and editor for the Los Angeles Times for many years. Bill currently lives in Cronomar, and what I love about this is we're going to start off in the year 1870, the very beginning of the city of Newport Beach, and we'll transition throughout the years up until present day in December, so, Bill, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. We're going to show a 90-second video of the nine lives of the castaways, but before we do that, I want us to take a step back and talk about how did we get to the point where a port was established in Newport Beach? So to do that, we've got to talk about geography, that's the key to the beginnings of Newport Beach. So this map from the early 1950s, commissioned by the Chamber of Commerce, shout out to them for that, shows basically Newport as it is today, peninsula, islands, it's missing Linda Isle because it was too early, but that's how it was in the early 50s, how it is now. 200 years before that, a little bit more, Newport looked like this. No islands, no peninsula, I got a little pointer here, this was the San Anna River coming down, and so how did this happen? How did this change happen in a fairly short amount of time? The San Anna River, it flowed down what's now the Back Bay, carved out the cliffs there, but a series of storms in the early 1800s changed its course to pretty much its present course, but instead of emptying it into the ocean on the border of Newport and, sorry, Huntington Beach, it curved around, went behind what's now Newport Shores, you can see the remnants of it there, Cappes Coast Highway, and it emptied out into what was in the ocean where Newport Island, Lido Isle is approximately. And so, very quickly, over not hundreds of years, but decades, it built up that peninsula through the mud and sand and silt that came out of that river, and the mud through the mud and sand and silt that came out of that river and the mudded flats that became the islands of Newport Bay, Newport Harbor. I want to point out real quickly, this harbor mouth, mouth of the bay right this time, super dangerous, deadly, sandbars, huge waves. It was so dangerous that when the government did, the federal government did the original survey, they would not go inside that bay. They said, "It's too dangerous to go in. All boats should stay out." So what happened? Oh, here's a, this is like 40, 50 years later. You could still see, super dangerous, waves all over the place. They actually had dredged this a couple of times with teams of horses at low tides, but you could see it wasn't that effective. And you could see Cronomar development wasn't that effective either. So what happened? This guy came along, Samuel Dunells. He was a captain. He owned a steamer, flat-bottomed steamer, important flat-bottomed steamer called the Vicaro out of San Diego. So in 1870, he got his boat full of lumber, went out of San Diego, headed north to ports of probably Anaheim Landing in Seal Beach, and then Port of Wilmington, which is now Port of LA, Long Beach. But the problem was, he's going up the coast. He owed money to all those ports, a lot of money. And so in his mind, I'm guessing, he's passing this entrance, "Why don't I try that? I don't want to face my creditors up there. Let's see if I can find a new port." So he, it had to be high tide, it had to be not a lot of waves, and he managed to navigate the harbor mouth. Oh, my pointer's gone. And then traverse the bay all the way up to Newport, or Lower Castaways now, and made a landing there. Word spread quickly among the ranchers, farmers, merchants, that there's a boat of lumber that happened to come into Newport Bay. It was the first commercial ship ever. Everybody was super excited because they didn't have to cross the dangerous Santa Ana River to get to the ports farther north. So this is Orange, it's not Orange County at the time, but this is Orange County's own port. And he quickly sold out of lumber, so the demand meant that that new port was viable. This is a picture of the Newport, I think this is the only one, taken from Upper Castaways. You could see it was kind of a thriving little village. It was kind of a United Nations of all kinds of nationalities there. And that's how they loaded the cargo ships, through a warehouse, through chutes. And I just threw this, this is one of my favorite photos of all time. It has nothing to do with this presentation mostly, but I loved it. So now for the video. Do I hit it again?
There is no chunk of land in Newport Beach that's more historic than the Castaways. Here's a look at its nine lives. Number one, a prehistoric watering hole created by the then mighty Santa Ana River flowing along the shores of what's now the Castaways. Life number two, a Native American hunting and gathering ground that lasted 6,000 years until the 18th century. Number three, the Plymouth Rock of modern Newport. In 1870, a new port was established on Lower Castaways, marking the beginnings of modern Newport Beach. Number four, a would-be oil field. For two decades, beginning in the early 1900s, oil speculators drilled wells like these, but to no avail. Life number five, an 18-hole golf course which opened in 1914 for a decade-long run. Number six, a trailer park and strip center. The Bay Shore Camp opened in 1927 and evolved into a trailer park with an adjacent strip center. Number seven, a site for a series of Bayview restaurants, including the Castaways Club that burned to the ground in 1956. It wasn't rebuilt, but the name stuck. Number eight, a residential neighborhood, nature park, and sports field developed in 1993. And the Castaways' ninth life is still on the drawing board, but with any luck, Lower Castaways will become a world-class aquatic center on the banks of Upper Newport Bay.
Okay, that's the video. We've got one little postscript to it. And by the way, if you hate the narration of that or the person doing that, I do too. I hate that voice. It's mine. My wife likes it, so. That public swimming pool that hopefully will be the Castaways, hopefully with a historical nod to its, that property's significance, Newport Beach. The first public pool in Newport was built in 1907. It was a gigantic saltwater pool, two football fields long. It was built by developers who were trying to get tract home lot buyers to West Newport. It's completely forgotten by history. I got these photos. I had to scour a bunch of aerial photos and see the pool in the background. But you could see in the lower left hand there, see how big it is? It ran from 26th Street to 38th Street. It had a pavilion, had a bathhouse. But the problem was, it was a maintenance nightmare. They took, the water came in from the bay, sea life came in from the bay. They couldn't get the, it was 1920, the filters were horrible, so the developer walked away from it. City took it over, and by 1929, city had had enough, so it just stopped repairing the pool. In 1940, that pool was closed. They started to, or they decided to fill it in, not a shovel at a time, but this is the publicity shot that ran the newspapers, the pool being filled in. And what became that property is it's now the 38th Street Park. So when you drive by that park on Babo Boulevard, Babo Boulevard, you now know there was a gigantic saltwater pool there.
I've lived on the peninsula for 20 years, and I never knew that story until like literally three days ago. So that's incredible.
Yeah, a lot of great history.
200 yards.
Yeah. No, it was, yeah, 200 yards, yeah.
Incredible.
Thank you very much for having me.
Yeah.
You wouldn't know that story if you listened to Bill's podcast.
Well, no, that's why I was going through is, he said, "My top stories for 2024," and this is one of them, and I missed it. So thank you, Bill. That was a terrific history of the city for Lower Castaways. Thank you so much. Looking forward to doing more of those. Okay, Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Okay, terrific. Now is the time for council announcements, oral reports from council members on committee activities, and the time for council members to request an A1 item to be placed on the future agenda. I'm going to take a little bit of here with Mayor prerogative. I'm going to invite our fire chief, Jeff Boils. I think now, Council, if you would allow me, I think now is a good time to do an update on kind of the fire preparedness, obviously in light of what's going on in Los Angeles. And then after the chief, we'll have the Director of Utilities, Mark Vkojevic, will talk about our waters situation as well. Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good to see the new faces. Welcome to 2025. My name is Jeff Boils, your fire chief. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide an overview on the city's wildfire preparedness response and water system capabilities tonight. With me is Fire Marshal James Gillespie, and Utilities Director Mark Vkojevic will join us as well, who each will provide a brief overview of their respective areas of expertise. Additionally, Public Works Director Dave Webb is here to provide any additional information or field any questions on city infrastructure. I'd also like to add that all preparedness efforts are a team effort, and I want to mention the work of Recreation Senior Services Director Sean Levin with Irvine Ranch Conservancy, and our partners with PD, who manage the city's evacuation plans, and all of our city leadership, our city manager's office and city council. Needless to say, the preparedness efforts are a team effort here in Newport Beach. So I know we've been hearing a lot of things on the news, and I feel very comfortable that we work well together here. The events currently taking place in Los Angeles serve, obviously, as a stark reminder of some of the issues that we face here in Southern California, or all of California for that matter, and the dangers of wildfires in our communities such as ours. And I'm not going to go into detail of the Los Angeles fires at this time. It's dynamic, the numbers are changing. I just want to point out that we do have two engine companies, one on the Palisades Fire and one up in the Eaton Fire in the Altadena area, along with a battalion chief. So we have nine total folks up there that have been fighting fire since last Tuesday. We rotated another one up today with three more going up tomorrow. Although our staffing capabilities, I'll just touch on that really quick. Newport Beach remains fully staffed with robust automatic and mutual aid, especially with our cities from Huntington Beach, Laguna Beach to the south in Costa Mesa, and obviously Orange County Fire Authority and the resources that they are able to provide with their wildfire, wildland firefighting, hand crews, their capabilities, helicopters, bulldozers, aerial attack, and things of that nature. And one other thing I want to point out really quick is, in partnership with UC San Diego, we've implemented some AI artificial intelligence cameras in the canyons. We have several located here in our area, but all throughout South Orange County, that are able to detect smoke and early fire. One was implemented without any human intervention just last month. There was an article in the Orange County Register where it detects smoke and can geolocate and activate firefighters and let us know exactly where to respond to. So we're trying to use some technology as well. And with that, I'll keep my comments short and turn it over to Fire Marshal James Gillespie because he can give a broader overview of what we're doing from a preparedness standpoint.
Thank you, Chief Boils. Mayor Stapleton, council, thank you guys for having us up here to talk about this. Obviously, right now is a ripe opportunity to have these communications with the public, and it's really great that you're giving us the opportunity to have this discussion. So currently, MBFD, we conduct inspections throughout the year in the wildlands. So if you're looking at Newport Coast, an area to be of concern that's in our very high fire area, we conduct biannual inspections there, so twice a year, spanning 313 acres of fuel modification each year. So we're touching almost 630 acres each year of land. In addition to that, we do 266 Hazard Reduction inspections. That includes homes down in Lower Buck Gully and along Buck Gully there. We go and do inspections there to check for vegetation management, vegetation clearance. We recently executed a grant with Cal Fire to improve our defensible space in Buck Gully. This was not in a vacuum. It was in partnership with the Irvine Ranch Conservancy and their support to do it intelligently in light of the NCCP and everything that exists there. But that'll continue to improve, running from Poppy Lane along San Castle up to San Joaquin, giving us even more of a buffer zone to continue to defend those homes. Additionally, we revamped our website with comprehensive materials. Homeowners can go on there and get documents to do a self-assessment, PDF that they could drop down and score their own home, that we've built for them to know where they have some weaknesses, or they can contact us with a form and we'll go out and do an assessment. To date, since 2024, we've done well over 170 individual homeowner assessments for mitigation, home hardening, defensible space, to provide that. It's free of charge. We make ourselves available. In fact, we have a deputy fire marshal that's pretty much full-time, pre-wilfire management, that goes and participates in that. Our community engagement's been outstanding as far as working with the public. The HOAs have been welcoming, let us come speak, other various community organizations, whether it's Speak of Newport, other outreach locations, that we can go and have those one-on-one with individual community members or with, as a whole, to where we can get folks on the same page. In that, we provide support to become a wildfire-prepared home through IBHS, which is a huge, huge opportunity for homeowners, not only to protect their asset, but to also potentially maintain their insurance, which is a crisis in and of itself. Additionally, we work with communities to achieve the FireWise USA designation. It's a nationally recognized designation. It's recognized by insurers, and it's a really great opportunity to bring the communities together to do some mitigation work in addition to that. And I will say that it's not, it's two parts of the equation. It's the defensible space is extremely important that we do in our open space in the city and working with our land management partners. But more importantly, homeowners taking that ownership on their own to protect their greatest asset, but we're here to support them along the way and provide that. Thank you. Mark.
All right, thank you, Fire Marshal Gillespie. Great report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Council members, so regarding our water utility, we have a few things we want to share with you. I prepared a couple of just PowerPoint slides just to give you some visual graphics, but I'm here to just also emphasize, what is our mission from a water utility standpoint? It's drinking water and fire water. We are crystal clear on what we are to provide. Our system is very advanced, and I want to walk through the triple redundancy that we have in our system. So we are focused on that. I think the same can be said about our neighboring agencies, Irvine Ranch Water District and Mesa Water District, also state-of-the-art and highly technical. So from this slide here, I'm going to walk you through our water system. We have three sources of water. We have our groundwater system. We have our Metropolitan Water District connections, which come from the state and Colorado River, and then emergency connections from our neighboring agencies. So all of our sources are either on or on standby, ready to go. And even though water from the state, as we know it, is challenging, problematic, restrictive, we have enough. And we have more than enough through our groundwater efforts, and that's really one of our strengths. Can I go to the next slide, please? One of our biggest assets is our reservoir system, and we have a reservoir in the very west end of town, central part of town, and at our highest point in town. The central reservoir, Big Canyon Reservoir, which typically holds 100 million gallons that has that in there today, is ready to go, is the heart of our system, and that can provide, depending on how much you need, it can provide weeks and weeks of water. And it's ready to go, and it's flowing as we speak today. Next slide. So we come here often explaining our capital improvement program to you. I think you'll see what a large focus we have on our capital improvement program, and that is a core value and asset to us. Our pipes are sized for firefighting, for fire flow. We have five different methods, five different pipes to get water, just from east town to the west end of town. Every neighborhood has at least two, and in most cases, three different pipes that serve them. So we understand power reliability is a huge factor, and it's an issue. And so we've invested over the last several years in putting in backup generators with all of our pumping systems. A large investment, but a very worthwhile investment. Every system is online, every system has been tested, and it's ready to go. We've gotten a lot of questions about fire hydrants. Every single one of our fire hydrants is also tested annually. It's run, it's actually operated, water's flown through it, and then we document that. Next and last slide, just regarding our staff. You know, our staff is trained and certified for this. We're focused on those two missions for drinking and fire water. I want to reemphasize the point about communication between the utilities, Public Works, and Fire Department. We have a backbone, often and frequent communication and collaboration system with the Fire Department. They know us, we know them, and I think that's a huge value. We monitor the weather as well so we can make adjustments. We've talked about power, try to make our repairs quickly as possible. And the last point I want to make is your Utilities Department is available and reachable, and you can talk to us. There's a direct phone number. There's no phone tree. You can call and ask a question, like we've talked to dozens and dozens of people over the last couple of days. How does water get to my neighborhood? What if that pump doesn't work? What if the electricity doesn't work? What are your backup systems? We'll walk you through each one of those for your specific neighborhood, and you can call and get a direct person to talk to. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer questions.
Awesome. So just for the record, this wasn't on the agenda. So Councilman Grant, if you've got, you can make brief comments, but, yeah.
Just thank you for those presentations. I wanted to mention, I really appreciate the work being done by our Fire Marshal Gillespie, the Fire Department in general, and water and all the departments. But it was remarkable to me to understand, I mean, we think of ourselves as a water community, and it's remarkable to understand that so much of our community are in compromised fire maps and how that really greatly affects us on so many levels with respect to homeowners' insurance and just home safety. And knowing that you're tasked with the Fire Safe Council, if that's the correct term, and how much work you've been doing on that, I'm really appreciative on behalf of our residents that you're doing that. And I'm hoping that that initiative and effort can grow to, you know, expand past what's really been a focus in, I feel, Newport Coast to other communities that, like I mentioned, there's so many communities in our city that are compromised from a fire standpoint, and we're not just all living on the water or have the benefit of that. So thank you so much.
Okay, terrific. Well, thank you to all three of you for the presentation. I think it's going to go a long way with the community, and thank you for what you do on a day-in, a day-in basis. So thank you. Okay, with that, I'll look for council reports. Councilman Wagon, do you have any comments or announcements on reports?
Nothing to report. The only one that was missed in that discussion is our PD.
The only one that was missed in that discussion is our PD did send a couple of units up to help with public safety issues in LA. So thanks to them and all of our first responders for assisting the rest of Los Angeles.
Sure. Okay. Terrific. Councilmember Berto.
Thank you. I just want to thank all of our first responders and our Public Works. It's been a challenging week, even here in Newport and definitely everywhere else. So thank you so much for all of your hard work and tireless efforts. And visited, attended the first Water Quality Committee for January. It was great to hear more about what's happening with the trash wheel and I'm excited to hear how we are making efforts to keep our very clean water even cleaner.
Terrific. Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
Just a few things. I wanted to mention one remarkable thing that I attended this last week was the Kings Cove Well Space grand opening at CDM High School. It's the 54th well space in our county. We're lucky at CDM to have this partnership between Chalk Hospital and the Newport Mesa Unified School District. It offers a tranquil space to students to practice mindfulness and develop educational coping skills. And given what goes on in our community on a regular basis, it's really nice to know that we've got our partners out in the community, the hospitals and the school districts that are working with our students to help them achieve and do well in their educational environment. Two other things, I wanted to give a quick update about the Newport Beach Animal Shelter. We've had a lot of questions about compromised animals, given the state of the fires in our communities. The animal shelter's been marshaling its resources to assist with the devastating impact of the fires on hundreds of displaced animals, many of which are experiencing burns and other injuries. These animals are flooding animal shelters throughout the Southland. Last week, Newport Beach staff took in animals from overflowing shelters and delivered much-needed resources as well to these shelters. A lot in our community are asking how to aid in the support of these vulnerable pets and the Animal Control Supervisor Valerie Schaumberg is recommending that anybody interested, visit PasadenaHumane.org. That's PasadenaHumane.org, their website for information about participating in the animal relief effort. And of course, the best way you can help is by adopting a pet from a shelter. I also wanted to mention, I sit on the board of the Transportation Corridor Agency, the TCA, who's the operator of the toll roads. Many of you have been experiencing something that the TCA is alerting about. Customers have been receiving, customers and non-customers have been receiving text message-based scams designed to deceive drivers by fraudulently requesting payment of unpaid tolls. So if you receive a message, you're advised not to click on any links. It's pretty important. These are very sophisticated scam. Instead, you're, you can verify the valid text notification by going onto your account, logging into your account on the toll roads or by calling customer service in the number and that tollroads.com website are both in the record now. So appreciate you keeping an eye out for that phishing scam. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Councilmember Grant. Councilmember Blom.
Oh, come on. Nothing.
Councilmember Weber.
I was just going to say quickly, I had the chance to watch the final portion of our motor officer test last week. So congrats to our latest motor officer, Shay Brackett. Whole new respect for what you guys do. So congrats.
That's my only goal on council is to ride one of the motorcycles around the streets and I haven't been successful, but I got a few more years. All right. Mayor Protem Kliman.
Thank you. I'll echo all of the sentiments from up here. Tremendous gratitude for our firefighters and of course, continued prayers for all of the fire victims and their families. In lieu of my report, I would like to ask our city manager for an update on the police chief recruitment.
Sure. Very happy to do so, Mayor Protem. So we are currently undergoing a recruitment for our police chief, as everyone knows. We have a executive recruiting firm that we brought on board and they have been doing a great job. Their application period closed at the end of November. We got a strong response with over 30 applications nationwide. And the top candidates are now going to be going into an interview panel that's happening next week. That will, the interview panels include experts, technical expertise panel, a community panel, organizational executive management panel too. So really a broad way to look at and do an assessment of all the top candidates. And then hopefully, top candidates arise from there and I will be doing final interviews, hopefully wrapping them up by the beginning of February. And hopefully from there, we'll have a good announcement to make shortly thereafter.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'll, and cuckoo with myself, there's two things I want to just mention briefly. One, I was, had the pleasure of doing the ribbon cutting for the RH grand opening at Fashion Island. If you haven't been over there, you're not alone. It seems like there's a two or three month wait right now to get a reservation in the restaurant in Ocean Grill, but I just want to thank my colleagues for attending that. But it was really well attended and great effort on their part. And then secondly, the Christmas Boat Parade. Congratulations to the Newport Chamber of Commerce and the Commodores Club on the 116th Annual Christmas Boat Parade. I have been intimately involved in that event for almost 20 years and I think it was one of our best yet. So congratulations to them and the Newport Beach and company for what they did to help promote and market that. It was a phenomenal event and certainly one of the events of the year and signature events in the city of Newport. My final thing on the announcements is obviously our hearts and prayers are with those that have been displaced from their homes and what's going on in Los Angeles. I think it's prudent for a city like Newport Beach. I think I echo all the same comments up here that we're, you were here, we're available and we'll be supportive of those that are looking for new homes. So what I'm looking to do is create a community fair, create an opportunity for Newport Beach to welcome those that have been coming down from Los Angeles. I'm looking for guidance from my fellow colleagues. We have two options on locations and times and I'd like to get your guidance on this. I think the reality is it'd be great to host an event. I've been told by some of our restaurateurs and some of our hoteliers and some of realtors, some of our school district members that there are a lot of families that are flocking down to Newport Beach and looking for some, a future. So I think it'd be great for us as a community to welcome them, bring in some of the schools. Sean Levin could bring in his Parks and Rec Department, talk about programming. We got a lot of associations that could show up and talk about different things. Young professional organizations, Oasis when it comes to senior services. I think we can do a lot to tell the Newport Beach story and welcome these people into our Newport Beach family. That being said, we're looking at January 25th. The two options would be one at Oasis in their event center at 9:00 AM. I would see this going, maybe Donuts have her a couple hours. I do love City Hall. I do love the grass. There is a big commercial event that same time here. However, we could do it at 1:00 PM same day, but do it here at City Hall in the community room. So I guess my question to you guys is, do you think this would be better at Oasis at 9:00 AM on that Saturday or do you think we'd be better fit here at 1:00 PM?
Will there be donuts in both instances?
Sean? Yes. I'm getting, resounding yes on both.
Either time works for me. Thank you for putting it together.
Yeah. I hope not everyone says either because we got to pick something. Do you guys? Okay. We're going to do Oasis 9:00 AM to welcome the family. So bringing the donuts, we're looking forward to it. Okay. So what I'm asking the community, if you have any realtors or friends or you're talking hoteliers, obviously, Councilwoman Berto, you run school board, maybe reach out to some of your school board members, some of the PTAs. If there are families or people that have been displaced, let them know this is a great opportunity to come and meet the community. And Sean, obviously, will reach out and be there and.
I guess I'll throw a wrench in there though, Mr. Mayor. I was looking at my calendar and it does appear the lifeguard tryouts are at 9 o'clock. I don't know if that would take away any fire resources or resources away, if that's something you're looking to have at this event, but there'll probably be at least several of them down there for the tryout. So that's one thing that popped up on my calendar. Maybe one is better, if that. I don't know if the chief would think there'd be any resources lost.
I think it's more important we get the families there than, I think we can get some fire resources, but I don't know. Is 1:00, it seems 9:00 AM might be easier for families than 1:00?
I was just throwing it out there. It's something I saw on my calendar.
Okay. Let's just do 9:00 AM Oasis. But thank you, Councilman Wagon. I think that's a good point. Okay. So January 25th, 9:00 AM Oasis, let's look for an opportunity to welcome those families. Okay. Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 18. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Councilmember Wagon, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to items 1 through 18?
No, I do not.
Okay. Seeing none. Councilmember Berto?
No, I do not.
Okay. Councilmember Grant?
Four.
Four. Okay. Councilmember Blom?
I have none.
Wow. Councilmember Weber?
None.
Okay. Mayor Protem Kliman?
I have none.
Okay. I will just make two quick comments. I'm not pulling these items, but I do have a photo for item number 10. This is the 38th Street and Lake Avenue Landscape Improvement Project. We have a before photo that I think you guys are seeing now. So this is what the entrance to Newport Island looked like for a number of years. This was a project that has been on the, it's been in the works for a while, but I'm proud to announce, if you go to the next page, next slide, this is what it looks like now. So much more welcoming to the entrance of one of our beloved islands, Newport Island. So congratulations to staff and congratulations to those on Newport Island. This is a big step in beautifying the entire area. And then item number 14, this is the dredging project in Newport Harbor. I just want to give a lot of credit to our staff and great job, Chris Miller, Dave Webb and everyone else and our harbor master, you guys, yeoman's effort on this and way to carry this. A lot of community support obviously went into this, but I've told you guys, I want to be there, hit the button when we start dredging the harbor, but I'm excited to partner with the Port of Long Beach and the private project up there to get this done. So congratulations on your hard work. Hopefully, we will get this done. So very excited about that. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Do I need to hear from the public?
No, we'll go to public comments after a second.
Okay. I will go ahead and move the consent calendar except for item number four, which was pulled by Councilmember Grant.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. Councilman Wagon?
And may I have the amendment to item one, please?
Oh, yeah. With the amendment to the minutes.
My apologies, including yes. Amendment to number one, the minutes. Thank you.
And I'll second. And you'll second that? Okay. Great. We will now have public comments on consent calendar items 1 through 18 excluding item number four since that has been pulled.
Good evening, Adam Leavrence. I just wanted to touch on item three, which is a resolution updating the list of designated employees for 2024 under the city's Conflict of Interest Code. Everybody who's been on the dais for a while doesn't need to hear this, but so the two new faces on council know where I'm coming from. I advocate that governments should not only avoid impropriety, but avoid the appearance of impropriety. I think this fosters a higher level of trust and faith in government. And as you go through your terms, I hope that you look at things and recognize what may not look quite right to people and then kind of consider that as you make your decisions. And then on agenda, consent agenda, item five, which is a resolution approving amendment to the key and management compensation plan for sworn police employees. I attended a function last week, saw a number of you there where I heard a public employee talk about how wonderful it is to work in Newport Beach and I think we all understand why that is and relayed that this person had a sibling in another city in another state in the same line of work who said, hey, you get paid for this, you know? And if you look at Transparent Nevada, the first three pages, 50 line items per page is heavily populated by police and fire employees and they're very well-paid as they should be. But this proposal is going to give seven to eight and a half percent pay bump for those who obtain college degrees, depending on what degree they get. And my take on civil service, I've done little piddly things. It should be about a level of service as well. And, and I mean, we're in a beautiful place, pretty well compensated, good insurance benefits, pensions, which are a thing of the past, mostly in the private sector. And I just hope people take that to heart, love the community, and it's not always all about money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. As I noted in writing when the agenda was released last week, I found it remarkable and not in a particularly good way that the entire business of the meeting was on the consent calendar where it would be approved without any discussion. So I'm pleased to see that at least one of the items has been pulled for discussion and I believe a separate opportunity for public comment on that. Of the remaining items that are on the consent calendar, I did want to mention number 16, which is the confirmation of two nominees to fill the vacancy on the Parks, Beach and Recreation Commission. While you were in the first part of your closed session, I did go to the clerk's office and I found that there were more than 20 applications for that position. And I don't know if you are aware that the members of the council who were not on the nominating committee, I'm not sure if you're even aware of who those other applicants were and limiting it to two seems very limiting to me. And the other comment I wanted to make is about item number six, which is the appointment of a subcommittee of your group to review all of our council policies. I simply want to urge that ad hoc committee to go slow about that and not bring back all of the policies to be revised in a single unit, which is really not digestible for either the public or the rest of the council. The last time that we had a comprehensive overall review of all the council policies within 2017 and one of the policies that was eliminated then was a policy to review the policies each year. And I think reviewing them each year is a lot better, just a few of them, than doing all of them every seven years. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none. Any additional council comments? All right. Let's vote.
The motion carried unanimously, 7-0.
Okay. Terrific. Item number four was removed from the consent calendar, so we'll start with, do you want a staff report?
Just a couple of questions, if possible, for Simone. So generally, I think that the spirit of this is probably a great idea and a lot of the nuts and bolts of it really work out. I'm just questioning like exactly how this is going to work. Obviously, you know, GPAC is a very large committee and there's a lot of moving parts in it and it's a, it extends past one year and it's been actually, the committee that we have in place right now has been in place for a number of years. I just, maybe you could fill in a few of the blanks about how this will work. I'm assuming that everybody's not going to have to reapply every single time. That's one kind of line of thought I was having. And then the other line of thought I wanted to answer is if we didn't do this, but we felt that there were members that either weren't fulfilling their commitment to the committee for reasons of, I don't know, maybe a larger number of absences or for other reasons, do we need something like this to actually continue the work of the committee? Can we remove people or replace them for other reasons than as this structure sets out here?
Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Grant. So as far as what the proposal is, so the process would be that the city, the city clerk's office will go ahead and issue a notice of vacancies and that'll solicit applications. The clerk's office will actually reach out to the current members and ask if they still want to be considered because they've already filed their application once and we have that on file. If they still want to be considered, and they'll be considered in good standing and they'll be added to the list. So clerk's office will reach out to the current members at the same time, take in new applications. Once the clerk's office goes through all the applications, determine that they're all in good standing, that will be given to the mayor and the mayor has discretion whether to make a selection based on the list that he has or he can form an ad hoc committee[1761.02]
to make a selection based on the list that he has, or he can form an ad hoc committee, or he can do anything else that he feels that is more appropriate to make that selection. And then from there, whatever these applicants are selected by the mayor, they'll be coming to the City Council as a recommendation, and right now we're scheduling for February twelfth to come back to the City Council.
Okay, so that's basically the standard process that we do for any appointments to boards, committees, or commissions, as they come up every two to four years. And I like that process, I'm just wondering, are there any other committees where we sunset that, those members have to reapply every single year? It seems pretty onerous, a lot of work, and especially since there's so much, you know, institutional knowledge that's gained as we go into the year, if you're starting at year one, and just the learning curve for somebody on the G-PAC committee is so great, I'm just wondering the utility of that compared to this, like, wholesale re-upping it every year.
So I think that with the clerk reaching out to the current members, I think there's an opportunity for the current members to continue serving as the G-PAC members. Is there a learning curve? Of course, but we do, we always do get new members after one member terms out, so it's not unusual for a new member to come on board. We've had members as part of the G-PAC that decide it's not for them, and they've quit, and we've had to go kind of cycle through. I think this item is important for us, because what we've done is changed the number of participants, and now we have a range from twenty to thirty. Correct me, Ben, we've always had thirty before? So in the past, we've had to maintain thirty, and that's been kind of challenging to maintain that thirty, because people, sometimes they voluntarily resign, and they don't want to participate. The item we think is important, because now we have a range between twenty and thirty, depending on how many applicants we get, we can land in between that.
Yeah, I agree with you, I think less is probably a better, you know, that's like a separate piece of this, the idea that they all be reappointed annually. Again, I'm not understanding the, I'm not opposed to it, it seems like a lot of work for staff, and maybe for the mayor or other council members, but it's not objectionable from, you know, any standpoint other than the, you know, the cost benefit of, you know, and I don't know any other, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm not aware of any other boards or committees or commissions that only have a one-year appointment, and I'm just wondering why that's the number.
It's really, this is going to be the discretion of the council, and that was the A1 item to do it on an annual basis. So if the council would like to change, amend the resolution, then that's something that council can go ahead and consider.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, this is, this is a bit more unusual than a PBNR commission or a planning commission, this will sunset eventually, right, when the general plan is?
When the general plan is complete, this, this committee will sunset.
Theory, that would happen at some point.
We know, we have a schedule for the end of the year.
Yeah, so there would maybe not be another committee next year, anyway.
There's a possibility.
Yeah, I realize that, I think that's even more reason to evaluate whether we really want to be, like, relooking or reappointing people that have already been appointed. We probably only have about a year left on this committee, and so the learning curve's been kind of established, people are working on it. Again, I'm not opposed to it, I just, I'm wondering the cost benefit of the amount of work that goes into the people on the committee. There's also a chilling effect for people on the, on a committee, if it's that kind of thing where, you know, when they get sort of hit the ground running, they're looking at maybe being removed for, I don't know what reasons, other than, because if we can already remove people for cause, I don't know what we're gaining by doing this process. Again, I'm not opposed, I just wanted more clarification.
Okay. Councilman Blom?
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments across the board. I think this has been a long process that pretty much never ends when we talk about the General Plan Advisory Committee, and, you know, I understand the concerns of any of the members up here, but I think the idea is that it's an ever-shifting landscape in which the job of the city is to respond in that, and so we would like to be able to have that piece, where we can bring in new members that might add something more to how we better position a general plan committee. And I've heard from both sides, both opposing sides on this issue, I think we are one of the more diligent cities in the state with what we've done. I think we have one of the only compliant housing elements. We've moved forward in a way that is unprecedented for the city we have, and so, you know, I understand that there might be some trepidation in the way we're moving forward right now with this specific piece, but I think the results speak very clearly. We're doing a really good job in the city, and so I want to thank staff for the amazing job of steering these committees, right? These are committees of the public, where we're taking a huge amount of input, and when you look at the size of some of these committees, there's a lot coming at them. That's a lot of data, it's a lot of information to process, and it's, quite frankly, a lot of resources that we have to dedicate just to these things in order to build these pieces. So, I can understand the frustration that we might have in removing some members and appointing new ones. I think that my full faith is with staff and what they've accomplished, and with this board and putting the right people on there. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments by council? All right, seeing none, we'll public comments on this item?
Mayor Stapleton, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher, and I am a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee, but I am speaking as an individual, not speaking for the committee, in answer to Councilmember Grant's question, which I don't think staff exactly answered, but I think the council member herself answered it. The existing resolutions already say that the members serve at the pleasure of the council, so the council has the ability to cull any unproductive members that, if it wishes to, and there is a standing rule that three unexcused absences will result in a request for you to replace that person. Even if I was not a member, I would not totally understand the motivation or reason for doing this. My understanding as a member is that our job will be finished this summer when the results, first of all, we are not the committee that had to do with the housing element, we're a separate committee. Since our appointment, there was a long delay for the city to put in place a consultant to coordinate the effort that we are doing, so we've actually been working only for about a year, and our part of it, I believe, will be done, from what I understand, this summer, and the results of that will be going to the planning commission and then to you. So why we're changing the membership at this late date, and like you said, potentially losing the institutional knowledge is not clear to me, and how the new appointments will be made is also not clear to me, including details, like, the original committee selected by the steering committee asked for the applicants to complete a questionnaire indicating their areas of expertise and areas of interest. I don't, it's not in the resolution, the mechanics of how this will work, or even when the notice of vacancies will be placed, or what it will contain. I believe the city clerk under the Medi Act can't actually, if the vacancies are being created on February fourteenth, I think she can only notice that twenty days before, so there'd be a very short window for reviewing these. And the existing committee had all these guidelines to look through, that you could only be a member of one thing, I don't think they followed it entirely, I don't know if the council, mayor, or committee will be trying to do that, and one of the qualifications, for instance, is to have a diversity of age, and our applications don't ask how old applicants are, so I don't know how we're going to handle that. So I really would recommend we just keep with the group that we have for the few months that it's going to continue to operate, rather than instituting this new thing that will only be used one time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, next speaker.
Based on what I've heard and the admiration I have for the people that have put so much effort into the general plan on the advisory committee, perhaps by going of a range from twenty to thirty, that gives the opportunity to infuse new blood and new ideas during the brief time the committee has left. To me, I don't know how many members are on now, but if there's not thirty, that's an opportunity right there. And if you've got somebody who is an intelligent individual and realizes how much work is involved, and then looks and says, well, say, say this lasts longer than the timeframe Mr. Mosher mentioned, and they come in mid-year, they may be dissuaded from even participating, so the short timeframe, you know, hopefully it'll all be done, the committee will dissolve sometime this year, but if it doesn't, to put that, every February timeframe seems like it could be problematic and dissuade people that maybe would like to be involved or should be involved. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Mayor Stapleton of District One, I live in Newport Beach, Newport Shores, so I'm part of your district, and council, council members. I'm Virginia Anders Elmore. As I said, I live in Newport Shores. I went to the General Plan Committee meetings for the last year, and actually, a couple of months ago, and I was allowed to become, or I applied, and I became a member of the committee, and I am so privileged and happy and excited to be a part of that. I, in my experience of this committee, we have dedicated people that are on there that have a vast knowledge of our city, they know our people, and they're just, I don't know, I just don't understand why this is coming up, and I, as, as we are going to be rounding this up and finishing it up, it just seems like a real, it's just not needed. I think they're doing a great job. We're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back up here, does any, any of the council members have any comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion? Want to make a motion? Do we have a second? All right, Councilmember Weber, second. We'll go to a vote.
Let's do a stroke, yeah. Vote. By a show of hands, all in favor, raise your hand, please. That would be six one with Councilmember Grant voting no.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Now we have public comments on non-agenda items. Any public comments on non-agenda items? Do you have comments? Yeah.
Sorry, I'm a new resident to Newport Beach, and I was just laughing earlier on when we were looking at the history, because I think I remember coming in nineteen sixty-eight to have a go at The Wedge, as we then called it before we did a Janis Joplin concert up in San Francisco. I've worked in my life as a chief financial officer up in Silicon Valley. I've been involved in some of the disaster repair plans for Compact Computer when I was the assistant treasurer, and been through Hurricane with those guys. I was actually in the Loma Prieta earthquake in Los Gatos at the time of that disaster, and looking at what's been going on recently with LA, and the way the government in Sacramento has been responding, it's just telling me that nobody is really prepared. So I looked at your website, our website, and it feels as though the disaster preparedness plan is out of date, it's two thousand and twenty-two, and it's very, very heavy legal reading. And what I'm feeling is you need a much simpler plan, a much easier plan for residents to read and be able to react to. In, in a situation like we've just had, obviously with the fires, that's one example of a major disaster, the one I'm worried about, because we have property up in San Francisco, is earthquake, and earthquakes spawn fires, obviously, et cetera. It's a very complex area, and I'm feeling as though the city really should readdress this whole preparedness in detail, and it's classic, looking at some of the videos that are coming out up in the Palisades, you've got buildings that are just ash, but they're still having the natural gas spigots still firing up and lit, because obviously the gas company doesn't know where to shut off the main gas lines. There's all sorts of problems with a major disaster, and as I said, I went through the natural, the preparedness plan that you had, and I was like, oh God, this is legalese, I need a simple PowerPoint plan, an action plan, and therefore, I'd say, we need to get it put together, we need to have the public involved and have public meetings, just to have normal humans come in and look at the PowerPoint and sort of try and understand what they should do if they have a major disaster in front of them. So I propose that something needs to be done on that basis.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Any other speakers? Mr. Boas?
Good evening, Mayor Stapleton, fellow council members. There's been a lot of talk about fires tonight. I wanted to introduce myself, my name's Brian Boas, I'm a resident, I'm the chairman of a newly formed foundation in our city, the Newport Beach Fire Department Foundation. We exist to support the needs of the personnel of our fire department. I'd like to express my deep appreciation and gratitude to our fire department and all the first responders, especially the crews that are on the front lines from Station Five, Station Six. I wanted to just use this as a minute to just let any council members in our city know that a foundation is here. We've received a lot of support from our community, a lot of appreciation, a tremendous amount of inquiries on how to help, and our job as this foundation is to harness the, these inquiries, harness the support, monetize it, redirect it back to the first responders. So we, we do have a website set up, we have a board, a seven-member board, we're allowed to receive, we're a tax deductible by one C three with a tax ID, so we can accept foundations. And I was able to visit the front lines of this disaster over the weekend, I was on, in the Pacific Palisades and Altadena. We were able to deliver some critical supplies to our crews up there, as far as basic needs that our firefighters were lacking, they did not expect to be up there for this long, so we were able to give them a boost of morale and go visit the guys. We also were able to deliver some meals and childcare to the families who have been without their, their spouses for about a week. It's been emotionally hard on these guys, it's been a tiresome fight, and it's, you know, it's hard for these guys to see such devastation and so many houses lost when they're trained to protect people's homes. So we had another big win over the weekend, we heard that Elon Musk was in Los Angeles delivering these Starlink units to provide better cellular coverage for communications, because where these fires are, there's very poor cellphone service, so it's been hard to communicate, not only with fellow strike teams, but with command, and also their families at home. And so we were able to secure thirty Starlink devices that can be mounted on the engines to provide instant Wi-Fi, not only helps with cellphone coverage, but also with maps. So one thing we want to do with, as this foundation, is help with technology to better protect and equip our firefighters when they go on these strike teams, and we're going to continue to work with the fire department for whatever types of technological needs they, they might have. And if anybody has any questions about the foundation or what we do, you're welcome to contact me, again, Brian Boas. Thank you for your.
How would people find the foundation? What's the website?
We're, we're www.nbfdfoundation.org.
Perfect. Great job, thank you for your work. Any other comments?
Good evening, council, Mayor Stapleton and Mayor Protem Kliman, and our new council members Weber and Bartow, congratulations on your new positions. My name is Anne Stenton, I'm with the Newport Maureen Association, I just wanted to say a Happy New Year, and looking forward to the new projects that are coming our way in Newport, including the water wheel that will be, you know, contributing to cleaner water in Newport Beach. The Newport Maureen Association represents the interests of over a thousand maureen permities in Newport Harbor, many of whom are your constituents, and we look forward to collaborating with you in the years ahead and supporting the city in addressing maureen-related issues. And please don't hesitate to reach out if you guys have any questions, if there's anything we can do to support you, we're always happy to sit down with city leaders and work towards mutually beneficial solutions. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, are there any motions for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, we're going to go into closed session, do we have any announcements, or do we come back after that and close?
Yeah, so just briefly, we didn't finish up closed session, so we'll be going back to closed session and talk about items three A through C, and we'll come back out and adjourn after we're done with that.
Okay, seeing that, we'll go into closed session. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Stapleton. Members of the council, there is nothing to report out of closed session.
Okay, terrific. We are adjourned. Thank you.